You're live. You ready? Okay. Well, I want to thank you for your past support. We always appreciate that. As promised several years ago when we started requesting funding for from Gary County and we had a plan. Well, the plan is being executed and it's working. We have two full-time staff members that work out Junction City office.
Are you guys still down on it?
Yes, and cover all of Gary County, a little bit of Riley County depending on location. But our information referral specialist, which was the expansion position based on the funding, is fully trained and it's just remarkable how many people you can help by just giving them access and knowing who to call. And then we have a, we call those information referral consumers or INRs. Just call, anybody could call for a phone number or some assistance. And then the next month, everyone that asked for assistance in the previous month is called to see how, how that worked. So we do a hundred percent follow-up for everyone that answers their phone. But we attempt, we make two attempts to follow up with a hundred percent of the people that called us for an information referral request from the previous month. So that just gives us an idea if, if it's working, how it's working, any, any changes that need to be made to the training or the execution of the INR specialist role. And something that's been very big in Gary County is our disability mentoring day. So we're in person again this year at the community center. We usually have seventeen, eighteen, up to twenty youth that come from the local school districts that attend that and a couple of employers. So we've used Ace Hardware. If you guys go in there, please tell her thank you because she's done, she's employed two of our youth and she's also done a job tryout for a third one. It ended up moving before the hiring or not hiring determination. So she, and she came to our, I'm sorry, I cannot remember her name, to our disability mentoring day two years ago and spoke with the students and said, this is what employers are looking for. These are the skills that you need to build to be a good employee. And then turned around and sponsored two youth. And I think that Derek, which is one of the success stories I sent, is still employed there. So we're super happy with how that's working out. Our footprint for community engagement has just, just continues to grow as more people hear about us. And we get to know more people through the community education activities. We just get invited to more things. Very active in Lubwell, Gary County. And I didn't see the traumatic brain injury prevention activity that you did the end of the summer last year. I didn't see that on the schedule so far this year. But it was, we were able to find bike helmets and the fitting of the bike helmet and the why, why it's important to wear a helmet to fifty-one kids last year. So I hope to do that again this year. We have the helmets. We purchased the helmets. And we just go right downtown where all the kids are riding their bikes and talk to their parents about traumatic brain injuries and prevention. So that's working out. I'm just, I'm just over the moon with how it's working out in this county. It just, I really believe it started with your commitment. Because once everyone sees your commitment, and I tell the staff all the time, hey, Gary County is engaged. They're really engaged. Then I feel like they have more energy for that. And at the Riley County Commission meeting, my request same, similar as this. They didn't ask me this year if Gary County gave. They asked me last year. This year, I just made sure to mention that Potawatomi and Gary, your neighbors in this trifecta of our biggest, busiest portion of our service area, are committed to funding the agency. And they were like, I didn't get any response. I didn't get any smiles or head nods or stuff. I'm like, okay, so I was like, I would like you to also make the commitment to show the engagement. So.
Are you familiar with our Main Street program?
Um, I'm not sure. Is there a specific program? Because I, I did make a list of the.
They host a, I just think this might be, they do different things at their markets on Saturday.
You are a little bit involved in it. Is it the Community Farmers Market?
There's two of them. Lubwell's on Thursdays and then it's a, it's a, it's a farmer's market, but there's like, they have other activities like safety training and that kind of stuff. And. Yeah, this weekend is nonprofit organizations.
Okay. Oh, gosh darn it. I, I, you know what? In the next update, I will send you our schedule for Gary County.
Oh, okay.
And I'll send it for the whole quarter so you can see what we've done and what we're scheduled to do.
Yeah, awesome.
If you feel like something's missing, then we can get involved with that because that's the.
And I don't expect you to get involved. I was just giving you that information in case you were wanting to get involved.
Always. More, the more, the better.
Yeah.
And because, you know, we have committed to being a bigger presence in the county, we've been upped our game for our, our table presentation and have added an interactive game for students and youth and parents to, to participate. Stack and blocks with a grabber or reacher. And then we have some glasses that simulate loss of vision or low vision.
And that's what Main Street is kind of doing is having these kind of displays like that set up for people to inform, not only sell their, their wares, but also come and learn about different things.
And the interaction was, was very positive. So that's just another example of when I have a little bit of freedom to financially, that I can just turn up the dial in many different areas. So our community education game, our disability mentoring day, the interaction with employers. We have Pizza Hut that was very involved with us in the past years. I'm going to invite them again this year. Previously, the manager for the Junction City Pizza Hut was from Almigo, Nick. So I'm not sure if he's the same person, but he was good at doing job tryouts for kids too.
Awesome.
So.
If you want to get the word out, kind of like she was saying about video market. Do you have a brochure or flyer that tells the services?
We do. And then we've developed a table tent, something that we can set, sit up, set up that people don't have to pick something up or read it. So they can just, they have visual. And then we have a, a display board that we put them on real big for the community events. And we did a, a kind of a table cover that hangs off the front that shows, that has our agency logo. So people can put the two together with the services. So those are all improvements that the table tent and the table runner and then interactive game were all improvements we've made since our community education program has grown. So. I just, and we get a lot of people stop by. We don't even give candy out anymore. And we still have a lot of people in our booth because you just start to engage people and talk with them and ask questions. And everybody's got a grandma, a cousin or something that, that might need our services. It seems like so. Another area that we've made a significant improvement is we are a provider of home and community-based services. And that, that is services provides a tenant care in someone's home so they can avoid nursing home placement. So we've increased that to seventy-three and I think it was fifty-eight in the prior year. So that is, because one of the questions you asked me was, how is, do our services save dollars in Gary County? That saves Kansas dollars. And then our involvement with the Safe Kids and the, and the homeless, the New Homeless Coalition does save dollars in the county, not directly, but indirectly. So the more we are engaged with all the different resources, the more we can turn up the dial. And I also like, I would like to kind of expand our, our impact to these different social service organizations and volunteer to be that person or that agency that if there's someone in crisis that we will be the wraparound. Like we'll plan the meeting, we'll invite the people and plan the wraparound so that we can continue the mission of, of providing access and no wrong door. So if you come to me, I'm not going to say, oh, that's somebody else. I'm like, sit down, let's call them together and access that resource. So.
Awesome.
Yeah. It's very exciting. I love everything we're doing here.
I love what you're doing too.
And happy employees and happy consumers. So I just don't have, just want to keep moving. I want to keep chugging along.
Well, we want you to too.
Good.
So you're still doing the military service?
I am, I am. I just, I have one more year left. So June of 2024, I just got a MRD extension for one year. So I get to stay another year in the Kansas Guard. Probably not a deployment coming up unless I can finagle my way to state till the division goes the next time. I mean, I would love to go with the division to Poland or wherever they go. I think it's fun.
Thank you for that too.
I appreciate that. Okay. Is there any other questions? I can't wait. This is my favorite one.
Thanks.
Thank you. It's, it's hard to add all your stuff to your person.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. You got me to wear a suit jacket. I told Trish Limley that it wasn't working out after thirty-one and a half years and we're going to have to let her go.
Yeah. I miss them very much so.
Well, thank you all for, for having us in. And of course, we'll stand for questions. And, and as Nikki said, want to make sure that you met Katrina. Very happy she's in that position. You all know Nikki Davenport, our court administrator to my right. Also with us is Stephanie Petrie, our district court trustee. And as I tell all the commissions, that's one that you really should like because she actually makes money for you.
Yes, she does.
And also Lloyd Smith. Our, our court services here. Not a lot has to tell you. I can tell you where the changes are. Mediation, we're asking to bump that from six thousand to eleven thousand. So far this year, we've allotted six thousand to Gary County and we've blown through that. We're at sixty-six hundred. We've done eighty-three cases. And if you know anything that's going on over there, there's a lot of jury trials going on. Very successful. And, and one of the, the notes on that is, I, I thought the attorneys would really enjoy this. It appears that the people who are really enjoying it are the defendants. Because the defendants no longer have to sit and get things secondhand. They're actually part of the process. They are, they're in there negotiating as well and having discussions with the mediator as well. They feel part of the process. So they're not having somebody come out and saying, well, here's one of the deal I got you. So that's been very successful. We had, there was a case highlighted early back last year that Judge Powers did and it would have been, it would have been three twelve-person jury trials. And he settled them out. It was a murder case that, that just that in itself is a tremendous savings for the county. So we're asking for a raise there. The other raise is on the computer, the capital outlet. I think we're replacing ten computers. And so you'll see that that portion of the hardware has gone up. And then the other, the system manager, let me explain this. I was remiss last year and didn't ask for a raise for Brent. The state employees that are being paid have received a fifteen percent increase in their salaries. The five and the five and the five again this year. Brent doesn't get any of those. And so last year, when this came about, I looked at Nikki and I said, we got, we missed it. Got to, got to make sure we get that done next year. In between that time, Brent gets a job offer. And so we met it. We used ink monies to meet that salary. That's what they're for, the computer. And so the portion of Gary County's, of his raise and pay that we're asking for is about six thousand dollars to increase him. And, and if you hear any of the nightmares from any of the other multi-county districts that have judges go into those districts and the parties and there's a different IT person in each county and some of them at the court IT, some in the county IT, it's a mess. So we're blessed to have him. So I think those are only changes. There's a couple of other things that I want to bring to your attention. We've talked to you about servers the last couple of years. And I think we've been mentioning the number of thirty-five to forty thousand. We're actually probably fifty percent low on that. And it looks like their servers are going to be larger than that. So this year Brent found a contract that we could sign to service those servers. So we're not asking for that expense. We think we can get one to two more years out of those rascals. And so we're going to do that with a service contract that we have for a lot less money. And then we will certainly keep you guys up to speed. But there's some in the neighborhood that have been throwing around like seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars. And we will certainly get that to you. Hopefully you don't hear that from us at this hearing. You hear that from us well beforehand to give you a heads up. The other thing I just want to bring to your attention and, and Stephanie with the court trustee back here, she made a funny comment. She doesn't need anything because they subsist on what they collect. And so her terms, we eat what we kill. And I said, that's a T-shirt. Do need to make that for you. But there is a movement in the state of Kansas. Odyssey, when it was put in, one of the main reasons behind that Odyssey was to bring all the money into one place. And so there's a movement to go to a one vendor system. And we're familiar with that one vendor system. We have other areas. We have one vendor system. And we see where the chinks of the armors of, of that is. And we are, we're objecting to that. We don't want to, we're very happy with our, our court trustee. Stephanie does a great job. Plus I can call her. She knows, she knows the people who she's dealing with. We get great service. Customers get good customer service. So if you hear of this one vendor system and you can help us there about saying, don't want the one vendor system. We want to have the deleted contract in our district who we want to make sure we get that otherwise. And with Gary County, you probably have enough business here. You're not going to get the flyover treatment. But I can guarantee you Morrison, Marion and Dickinson and anybody out West, it'll be a flyover county and they're not going to be on the list.
Is there, like, is it something you can write a letter or if needed?
Possibly, yes. And I would, I would certainly call on you if that, if that comes about.
So that's strictly with the legislature?
That's Office of Judicial Administration. And they, and they, 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 they thought it would be, I think they kind of thought it would be just kind of a done deal and it wasn't. We have, I, there was a couple, two or three judges that have written emails and I was one of them. And, and those emails have blossomed into other emails. So they're getting a lot more pushback than I thought they would initially, I think. Will, I will. But certainly stand. Did I miss anything, Nikki?
I don't think so.
Certainly stand for any questions.
Well, I, I was, it was maybe two years ago you talked about maybe the elevator.
I have not heard anything since, actually. Now that you say that, yeah.
I can tell you from personal experience, those are nightmares.
I don't want to get stuck.
Because we have the elevator in Dickinson County from the Big Bang Theory. That baby's been out of, out of service for over a year now. And they got it back in service and I think it was in service for a week. It's out of service again. So they have to bring everybody through the jail, back into the jail elevator and then up and back out. So it's been a mess.
And if somebody's been getting stuck in our staff elevator, that's, you know, a good day. I don't know what's going on with them, but I haven't heard anything since.
Cory hasn't said anything.
Yeah. And this was in the Pinell. That was in the Pinell building, wasn't it, Trish? The.
I thought it was in the, it might have been in the, no.
I, I know we've had issues both places, but yeah, I haven't heard anything. So.
And I would say I'm extremely excited about your interest in the drug court program.
Yeah.
Very, very pumped.
I would have been at the graduation, but we had a budget hearing.
No, I actually met with a client today.
Did you?
Yeah. So we're going to start weekly meetings next week and start, start them on a twenty-four seven day.
I bet I know that client because I told him that you have a life too on weekends.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's, I mean, I appreciate it because sometimes I have people contact me and then I contact them back and they may or may not contact me back and just, you know, I see them in the past. I'm like, hey. No, he's, he stayed home.
Good.
We met today.
And, and, and law enforcement's coming over. So we're very, very excited about that.
So what's your thoughts on how soon will you get that established?
You know, and, and we're, we're blessed to have Chrissam. She's been there, done that. She's from the, the gold standard, the fifth judicial district of Wyandotte County, Lee Fowler down there. I mean, it's one of the oldest and best drug courts in state Kansas. And so we started in two thousand and nineteen and we had some hiccups. But if we started, if we get the ball rolling, I bet we could be up and running maybe by the summer, next summer. It takes time. It takes a lot of time. And, and, you know, just going through, we have our first graduation today. And I was writing down some thoughts and people to thank. And the amount of people in the community, it's daunting that have lent a hand and have a part in this. I mean, it makes you just full of pride, full of pride. Just, it's very cool. Very cool.
Oh, where are we, Nikki, on the security cameras?
So the security cameras will be installed. I believe it's the, either the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth or twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, somewhere in there of June. And then once those are done, then I thought we could set our date for the ribbon cutting and open to the public and all of that. I know that in working with the, the deputies, Deputy Helms was, he was supposed to go and find out about the X-ray machine and possibility of getting that, you know, in our new security building. But at this point, we will open with what we have right now and then get the rest of the equipment in. But we're waiting for those cameras to be installed and then we can open to the public. We'll just need to find a date that works for everyone.
They're not using the same stuff they had?
We are, but we're needing the, you know, the machine, the X-ray machine itself and then the belt, the conveyor belt.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's some technical term for that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I like the lockers.
Yeah. I think those are going to be, I know you, that's your favorite subject. He loves them.
We've had a lot of discussion about lockers.
They're clear. So you can see through them if somebody wants to, you know, not, we don't want them taking bags, large bags and tablets and things like that. And they can also be utilized for cell phones.
Cell phones.
Yeah.
Well, you've taken all the bushes out and thrown the courthouse and that's where people used to put their stuff. Years back, we, we put up that, that fake metal detector. And we'd sit in Judge Twinbaker's office and watch people walk up and walk back to their car and walk up, walk back to their car.
Never know what you find out in that yard.
I remember only touring the White House years ago and people were doing that as well. They were putting stuff out in bushes. And I felt sorry for this one lady. She carried four cars up there and they come back. And they threw it and crashed.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
She was devastated.
She wished she had a bush to put it.
Well, people were making comments about that too. Well, can we put our stuff outside? And, you know, that's up to you all, but we can't police it.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Boys, y'all, are y'all doing summer ball?
Yes. I'm worn out already.
I was telling somebody, I said, we're two weeks in and I'm over it.
Yeah, we're.
You mean the boys playing? Not you guys playing?
Yes.
Do we need to tell them by the time you ran?
No, 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 that can stay between us. Because it would be the same. No, we played last weekend and we play this weekend. I'm virtually over it.
Are y'all at Creekside again or?
No, we are, we're in Wichita. We were Kansas City, Missouri off of Berry Road last week. And then Wichita, because the events we play start on Thursday.
Yep.
You know.
Marcus has one tomorrow, Thursday at nine, nine AM.
Last week, we were Thursday at eight o'clock at night. Friday, ten o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the afternoon. Saturday, twelve something. And we qualified for Sunday. So that was ten o'clock Sunday morning. That's way too much time. This week is Wichita, three o'clock Thursday, eight o'clock Friday, noonish. And then noonish on Saturday.
The one that kicked me this week was we play tomorrow, we play Friday. I'm sure we're going to play Saturday and Sunday. We may have a Monday game.
That's no good. That's no good.
So excited.
Bet it rained.
Thank you.
So I got rained on. I didn't like that at all.
All right. Well, good luck.
Next year, we got rained on in Austin. So that made it even worse.
Even worse.
Yeah, there was a lot of driving.
I can imagine getting in the hotel for three or four days.
I was going back and forth.
Yeah, we were driving.
Yeah, I worked till, let's see, on Thursday, we played eight o'clock at night. I worked till three. Went up to the game, watched from eight to ten at night, draw points. Went back to work for the morning on Friday. Missed the morning game because we had training. Left, went, watched the Friday game. Or, yeah, came home. Saturday, went back up. I'm like, I'm not driving back and forth two more times. So we stayed Saturday night for Sunday.
Yeah.
So we're going to stay one night this week too. But I'm not staying three nights. No. That's the thing with the older tournaments happening and starting on Wednesday, Thursday.
So what age is he talking?
Sixteen is mine.
Is everything good on your side of the road?
Yeah. The renovations finally started to progress. It sat dead for a month. But they're, they kicked it in. I mean, they've been throwing carpet. They don't let them ride. It's starting to look really neat, but it just went to sleep for a while. Then you add the asbestos in the basement. You know, that, that.
That's really a delayed thing.
A disaster. But yeah, it, it's really stepped up.
When you have old building, you hear them.
Yeah. I was, I was hoping that they weren't going to sit there for a month waiting for carpet tile to come in on the court trustee's face. Peel one of the tiles off and find it there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, it did start in the process. I, I would venture to guess, end of June might be a little aggressive, but I'd say end of June, first week or so in, in July, we should be looking at moving, I would think. But it's, I mean, they're really moving. Yeah, they're, they're making up for lost time. See you guys.
Thank you.
Yep.
See you. Kansas City.
It's a. We'll have to talk about it sometime. No, it's that. I went to a meeting yesterday. Oh, boy. Here we go.
Captain and Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Uh, so the memo that I proposed to you guys, it's kind of highlighting, as part of my budget proposal this year, I'm seeking to work forty-hour weeks with the staff. Last budget included a reduction of one full position. It's one that, I won't call it a floater, but we, we hadn't had it full. We kind of rotated through that position over time. So we were kind of living in a perfect world where we didn't have turnover. And we've got a lot of turnover. So the, the requirements from the state have done nothing but increase in recent years. And I think, you know, with experiencing turnover and the need to train and do more with the staff that we have, I don't think we're going to be able to sustain the level of, of quality that we've had, unless we do something. So that full position, I still think is a good thing that that went away. I don't think that, that, that full position was necessary. But I think we can get the quality we need and allow ourselves the more time to train and be proficient by moving the staff to a forty-hour week. It's kind of the happy medium between, you know, where we were previously, where we were last year, doesn't quite work. I think this will put us right in a happy spot.
I think this will put us right in a happy spot. Um, did they get this sheet?
No.
Okay, um, so we worked up a few scenarios where, um, you know, uh, the, what the current budget would be with thirty-seven and a half hour weeks, um, with the staff that we currently have. We brought forth the scenario where we, let's say this one, where we moved to two thousand and eighty hours a year, which is, which is a forty hour work week. That would lead to an increase in wage. And I might, I might have the wrong numbers on my memo.
That's right, I checked and checked.
Okay, so the, so that would lead to a wage increase overall with all my staff of thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars a year.
And that's not the benefits, because if you count the benefits in, it's in his memo line with that twenty-nine, four oh four.
But with this line, this is wage and benefit?
The tw- you down at the bottom where you're total.
Right, but I didn't, I didn't catch that that's annual wage and that's annual wage. Is this just benefit?
This is something I did separately for you, so ignore that up there. This is just your wage and benefit difference. So these two would be your totals.
Okay, the totals, okay. Yep, so the memo is correct. So if we increased our current staff to forty hour work weeks, that would increase the budget of the wage and benefits by twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and four dollars for next year. If we were to add another position back, but stay at thirty-seven and a half hour weeks, that would result in an increase of sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which I, I don't think that's the ideal way to go at all. But my benefit proposal, my personnel proposal on my budget for this year was the only real increase that I had, big increase. Um, and that would be.
The difference between.
Yeah, but it's, that's even only eighteen thousand. I should have looked in this lore, but, but twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and four dollars at worst. Increase in, in the personnel portion of my budget for this year. So I'll leave you with that to chew on for a while and, and let me know your thoughts. I, I really think.
When did you get rid of the position? Because in twenty-twenty-two, it says you have seven, and then last year it says you have seven. So I, I don't remember.
Well, because in twenty-twenty-two, I only had seven positions full out of the eight that I had. I had eight positions.
Okay, okay.
I had budgeted for eight positions, but only seven of them were full.
Oh.
So it's like, I call it, it wasn't really rotating, but we, we had one vacant and we decided to just stick with what we had and like say, now we've experienced turnover and requirements through the state, you know, quality and everything is, 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 the expectation is higher and we've always provided quality anyway. But I think to maintain that, we're gonna need to, to change something and I think that's the, that's the best overall solution for the county, I think. And it, and it's, I stayed in there too, you know, it's, it allows us to, to have that, the, the smaller increase as opposed to the other option, but then it allowed, you know, we'll have more access to the public because we will be working forty hours a week now.
Then it also gives you, I know you talked a lot about having people train.
Right.
And just conversations we had.
Right.
You guys aren't, not allotted time to get the, the necessary training.
Right. And actually, we're currently training two new staff, which is, which is unique to my time here. We lost a twenty-year employee to retirement, but, um, we've got a lot of training to do along with right now, all the maintenance we have to do and it's substantial. And it, it just doesn't seem like there's enough time in the day the way it currently stands, but. No, this wouldn't take effect until next year anyway, but we, we can do what we need to do to, to, to get through this year, knowing that, you know, next year, we're gonna have ample time to do what we need to do and hopefully that's, you know, long-term, I mean, that's sustainable as things change and state requirements and whatnot, you never know what the future holds, but, I think this is the best solution for now. Um, so I'll leave that as the personnel side and then moving on to the, basically, the only thing I changed from my contractual services and, nothing really changed. I know in the software maintenance, uh, went up. So last year being the first year I'd ever went through, you know, item by item by item, I forgot our sketch software is a fifteen hundred dollar P. So I added, that's the diff- sixteen hundred dollars. That's the difference in the software maintenance is our sketch software is now included in that number. And if you look at our twenty-twenty-two actuals, there's a couple, you know, our memberships and dues show two thousand dollars, but really it's, I, I, I don't know exactly what that is, because we have, you know, I maintain an I double A O membership and we do two Kansas County Appraisers Association memberships and that's about six hundred dollars a year, so it's just a matter of, you know, where those numbers came from, where they got put. Same thing with the subscriptions. Um, we have a subscription to the newspaper. It's just a hundred and ten dollars a year. We tried to pay it for the whole year and they returned it and told us to do it month by month, so it may actually be a hundred and twenty dollars if it's ten dollars a month.
How, how long did you do that? Because I, I, they sent me a ten dollar, I've sent them three months. They didn't send it back, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how long, because I think they're doing a lot better now.
Yeah, it was like a month ago or, I don't remember for sure, but we, we paid and they told us we couldn't do that anymore and.
Yeah, they were worried.
And I don't know if the hundred and ten was, you know, a ten dollar discount, because now it's ten dollars per month. That would be a one-month discount, so we're not gonna get that, so that may actually be a hundred and twenty dollars. Um, and then our printers, I don't know what I did on the math last year, but it's two hundred dollars a month and there's twelve months. I don't know if I did ten. But so that's twenty-four hundred dollars instead of two thousand, so minor changes in the contractual, uh, no change in the commodities. If there's a, I spoke with Tammy on, you know, any kind of inflation adjustment, we just don't know, so ours are small enough that I don't think it's gonna matter. Um, and then capital outlay, you know, I maintain that two thousand dollars and that's for, you know, whatever we may need. Last year it was chairs. We do county shirts. Um, there's just a few small items that we do from year to year and, and I keep that, but. So the big one again this year would be the personnel and that's something that I think, you know, we're gonna have to address one way or the other. I, I don't know that there's any kind of technology that can make up that gap or anything like that. I think just having people and boots on the ground, you know, uh, ears and, and eyes for the taxpayers, I think that's the best solution, so. With that, that's me, that's it.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. If you guys think of anything after the fact, email me, call me, I'll, I'll be happy to answer.
The only question I had, do you think the leasing vehicles is working on?
I do. Um, it's, it's taking some folks some time to get used to driving a, you know, a bigger pickup than a car, but we've actually also extended that out. We're gonna have these vehicles on longer scale. We're gonna have these for five years. Um, with the automobile market changing the way it is and the uncertainty there with costs and all these different things, we lock that in at our contracted rate, no matter what. And, uh, so we'll have these for five years unless, again, we always have the option to opt out of that program if we need to, but, that lease payment cost there should be consistent moving forward for the next several years if, if the county's okay with that. I think it's great. Um, we've got nice new vehicles that are reliable, um, standard. Anyone can hop in anyone, it's the same car, you know it's gonna start and, uh, they're safe, so.
Awesome.
We love it.
Well, I'm glad.
Sounds good.
They're Fords though. We tried to get Chevys, but.
Oh.
Yeah.
I saw the police vehicle and the chair beams like Dodgers broke my heart.
There's a name for Dodgers, I can't say it on the.
I know, he's just a Dodge fan.
Oh, that, I didn't mean that. I think Dodgers are fantastic. You have a beautiful charter, Commissioner.
It must be budget season.
Foot in now.
It's fine.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, you guys have anything at the moment? Again, if you think of anything.
Thank you.
Give me a holler. I'll be happy to answer.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, guys.
It makes circles, it makes things round, you know, and everything doesn't have to be a. That was my mouth working faster than my.
Hello ladies?
Hello. Mine is much more simpler, I think, um, and some others. Yes, yes. Um, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to listen and to review it. Um, I'm gonna leave the, um, sat, the personnel line item, um, to Tammy and Crystal. We are, uh, making just a few changes, um, with the contractual services. I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna, uh, have that total line item at four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. It's lowered by three hundred and sixty dollars. Um, just going over a few things, um, such as, uh, the plans for training and the lodging and the mileage are adjusted somewhat um, because of the mileage not being as far as some seminars are in, in some years. So you can see I made, um, that line item, uh, three hundred and sixty dollars lower. Our commodities, I did keep the same. Um, our capital outlay, um, I did keep the same also, just to allow for any additional upgrades that we would need. May, I don't think chairs, maybe some chairs, but I just always like to build at least fifteen hundred dollars for those unexpected items. So my total proposed budget is two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, I do want to say that, um, my plans for retiring, that is still for the end of next year. And so, um, Jackie is our plan to run. She is currently my deputy, of course, as we said, and she's doing an outstanding job. And, um, just visiting with Crystal and Tammy, we kept that personnel line item the same, just so it, um, you know, if I retire in October or December, you know, that's still to be determined, but I plan on staying at least through the end of, um, November, but at the end of December for sure. I won't stay into that first week of twenty-twenty-five. So we just kept that line item flowing the same, um, just given the fact that we don't know if, you know, if I retire earlier, of course, it will be an adjustment lower, but I just wanted to, um, mention that. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and of course, you know, um, as you guys know, we do have the technology on the budget, so that helps out substantially on the regular budget. I do have it attached to, um, I don't know if, I think Tammy might have attached it to yours. It's something you don't need to approve or anything. I do like to provide it for you, just to see what the cost of the office is, the total picture of it. All right, if you have any questions, just reach out. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Dave.
You're welcome.
She was gonna try to sit in the back, she said.
Waited me a few words.
I'm just simply observing your learning, how it all works.
Way to knock it out the park there. Want beer?
You gonna ask questions on this matter?
Yeah. How goes it, Peter? Good, hey, um, the court ordered that you provide some service to my client, changing new directions or.
This is on vacation.
Just. How are you?
Yeah, I'm good. Hello.
Hello, how are you doing?
Don't be shy.
Jennifer Allen is back up. Jennifer Allen is back up.
Yes.
Questions or comments, yeah.
No, I'm just, I'm just backup for the board.
Too easy.
And that's?
Awesome.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry.
You don't pick.
There you go. I thought you, you just stay in that spot, huh? Usually it's a chair in front or you just decide like that spot?
No, we're District One, District Two, District Three.
Oh.
Always.
Always. You just changed a little slide up. I got you. I'm tracking now. Okay, in front of you, I think we, last time it was better if we went off of this sheet, the big, long one. And I don't know if I said the, the total first and then we went down line items. But, um, there is a change about amount of requested, uh, what you have before it was two million, sixty-five thousand, forty-eight dollars and zero cents. Since then, we have paid off, um, a lease purchase and that amount will be sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars being paid off of that, so what we'll be recusing is two million, a hundred and forty-five dollars.
But you were asking for two million and sixty-five.
Yeah, that's affected by the payoff.
Yeah, payoff, interest and all that's in, um, goes for another line we're about to get to.
No.
No. Uh, you subtract, we requested a beginning.
I thought you said two million and one twenty-five. Two million dollars and a hundred.
Forty-five dollars, no.
Got it. Got it, got it.
From the previous two million, sixty-five, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was, thought we were adding.
Nope, taken off, so, and that, yes, because of the, which goes with the nine, eight-five leasing financing principle. Is where that was coming from, so, uh, which was that rec med unit, so. So with that going down to line items, and I'm happy to start with whatever, but I went in with increase and decreasing. Line item six thirty for computer hardware is down fifteen, a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, an increase on six thirty-nine of fifteen hundred dollars, uh, due to ambulance and materials and buildings. Motor fuel, we all know, if not, it's going up ten thousand dollars. We added additional to that of an increase as well as parts for vehicles. Were six fifty-one of five thousand. Medical supplies up ten thousand, uh, supplies are in demand and can confirm on that is very high and to get supplies, we reach out to all people, so. very high and to get supplies, we reach out to old people, so. Kitchen supplies up two hundred bucks, uh, protective gear, we added back into it um because EMS, where you guys decide to cover the EMS guys, that is, is a dual sword with EMS and fire. They use that for bloodborne pathogen protection as well as uh vehicle extrication, it's on the ambulance within twenty-four seven with them as a dual role, so. We did increase that one, that's eleven thousand. Medical expenses, line item seven twenty-five of ten thousand just because medical expenses. Maintenance seven forty-six up four, same as seven forty-seven of four thousand. Uh, travel and training seven sixty-five, two thousand eight hundred increase. Contract operations four thousand. EMS equipment eight oh four, the second page is up eight thousand. And then communications, we ordered a decrease of three thousand dollars from last year. And then the capital, as you can see, is the one that we asked Tammy for, uh, is forty-five thousand five hundred this year. Uh, this would be for uh Station Two's AC unit, kitchen update and shower area, uh, placement in the concrete apron on Station Two.
You said this?
What's that?
Capital equipment?
Yes, eight thirty-five. We, last year was at uh four hundred and fifty, I believe. Yeah, four hundred and fifty thousand, we asked last year, that was because of the med unit, purchase of the med unit, which now we rected loose and insurance paid for that one, so now we got a brand new one. The next year, um, lease purchases shows the one that's purchased this year, but we'll get it in January through the building, it's being built right now. Which on zero four zero one would lower that to two million one hundred and forty-five dollars. Requesting from, we currently now, we just got that one delivered yesterday. Um, Ken can talk, but it takes a couple of weeks for the, we had to fully stock it with everything that was off the other one, which we robbed to put other places for supplies. Um, but we do have the dip later, all that important equipment that's going back on it and was checked out and they will go onto there, once it's fully stocked, the board of EMS comes in and then they will register it as a menu and then we'll be back up to four working, but five, yeah, overall. One is in the shop right now for mechanical issues with the turbo, so. So we have three working right now. What else? But also.
How do you dispose of the old ones?
The other one we donated to the die of Timor County, said it was a joint deal. Um, we don't get a lot for the old ones, sometimes we get Public Works or whoever. Um, and then we get grant from the city of, if we could donate it to them for no cost, they, they do what they want, but we don't get anything any, for any old vehicles anymore.
So like, in our case, we put a lot of our stuff on Purple Wave.
Yes, we do, yes. We could do that, yeah. We are doing that with the one that was in the yard at Public Works right now, it's just sitting that we robbed parts off of. It's down to where we can't use it anymore, so we're gonna pub Purple Wave that, yeah. Um, as for kind of requested for runs, it's on this one, right, Ken?
The last five years is on the, that one.
The last five years on this one. Which has kind of got a gray with the green and red for color volume.
And how many are outside the, outside the city?
Um, yeah, if you go to the next page or the last page. Might be very last page. It should say city, county and then out of county. Somebody that's picked on the. Oh, I topped off that. City, county and out of county, uh, nine-one calls. All we, uh, all I posted on here was transfers.
We can get that down to you. I do have some more notes, um, we did a rate increase with our, our um pricing of for services and that should be a benefit to both of us, city and the county side. So that happened April first. Um, too quick to see if that has helped, but we also increased our staffing of three people, so um one is still in training about to be cut loose, so um that increase is bigger because of our three staffing and a salary increase with the city and the local that we did, so.
So when, um, and I've never seen the agreement between the city and the county for ambulance service, have you seen that?
Yeah.
One that was older than I am?
No.
Nineteen sixty-seven.
What's that?
It's nineteen sixty-seven, I knew it was, it was pretty old.
Okay.
So I, I just want, I guess, I, so we're only paying the salary and benefits um for the fourteen EMS employees, correct? Okay.
Okay, so would that have a question, because on the first page we have salaries and wages under that five twenty? And that's one man nine hundred seventy-three, one ninety-eight, divide that by fourteen employees, each one of the employees that you make is an average of a hundred and forty thousand and thirty-sixty-four dollars.
No.
It's.
There's some employees that are totally EMS employees, but everybody's an EMP.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So basically a salary right now, like, I don't have to come in front of me like a rookie fireman. Again, started, he gets paid so many dollars an hour to be a fireman and then he gets an EMS and has becomes an A and then a um paramedic, but it raised, both, all the paramedics, well, they're, are now more full-time now, but it's, it's a mixture of their, because you don't know who's gonna be in ambulance staff at a given time, so all fifth, all, every single fireman is an EMP. No, the As can't explain all that to you.
Yeah, so when you ask for the breakdown of firefighters and EMTs, the forty-two and fourteen, um, so the forty-two people, um, their fire pay comes out of the city and then their EMS pay is charged to the county. And then all the paramedics pay um is straight to the county.
There's some people who don't do any medical stuff, if they're like driving a.
Yeah.
They're all capable of.
They're all capable, something happens in the back, they get switched.
They're gonna be there, you're done.
And we've switched, I've been, been in that predicament when I was a firefighter with an, a little guy in the county, um, switched with his services because I was a higher up.
Yeah.
The care goes with, yeah, and for the county, usually it's the third person that goes out on the county with a paramedic if he's not on that with an A and an EMT on that medical rig, so.
When there's a run in the county, especially on like, like accidents, we probably roll a second unit with us for rescue.
Correct.
That's.
Four men engines.
That's extra.
For all vehicle wrecks, yes. Or special operation, like all the tractor rollovers that happened, uh, the machinery accidents that happened in the county this year, yeah.
So if you have somebody who is a firefighter and they're an EMT and you bill us and what is their rate for a firefighter that's a paramedic otherwise?
Based on their years of service.
Yeah, I know it would be based on their years of service, but just on average.
It's not based on service.
No, yeah, EMT is a flat fee based off their certification.
So you're saying all your EMTs are firefighters?
Yeah.
Yes.
All firefighters are EMTs?
Everybody do a rule. But uh EMT um i- is a flat fee whether you're an EMT, an AMT or paramedic, that, that is a block. And then firefighter is.
Extra fee on the firefighter's wages or something like that.
Yeah, and then firefighter goes up immensely based off of years of service where their EMT doesn't change based off years of service.
So you're basically using it more like a stipend form for getting an EMT more than anything?
Yeah.
No, you use it for providing service, that they have, they have to bill, bill, I mean.
No, it's just that if the, if the range way is not changing, then it's, it would be like a, what a stipend is, because stipends don't change.
No, the raise, they do, there is a raise every year in their EMP salaries.
Yeah, yeah, and it does increases.
It creates for contract.
Yeah.
So it's not a flat rate that doesn't change.
Is that, you said per contract?
Yeah, and they do the contract, there is a year.
Yeah.
Every year.
Yeah.
With the, with the um bargaining.
Yeah.
So, but that, if, you know, in other words, i- if I'm an AEMT and Ken's an A and he's a paramedic, but he's an EMT, um, if he's been there twenty years, I've been there three years, our EMT salary is exactly the same.
So that's what you meant when you said it didn't change?
Right, right.
So based on which skill level they're at, they get a set fee?
Correct, because they can do more and then.
Yeah.
And we can bill differently for the paramedics, Tammy, and the EMTs than I can for an EMT.
Correct.
So in that case, your base rate actually increases annually like I think Koba would because you would be shifting the entire scale for each of your positions, is what you're doing?
Yeah, I, we're, we're providing a higher level of care so we can bill a higher level of care.
For the different levels.
Yeah, which in April was the sheet we gave that says BLS and ALS, so BLS is basic life support, A is advanced and we, we charge even advanced life support two, depends on what that paramedic does in the back.
So when you give us EMS is fourteen and fire is forty-two, that's technically not correct because you technically have fifty-six people you're billing us for for salary? One of those has to be.
The, the fourteen, you, you get the whole chunk, the forty-two, you get about a fifty percent chunk. More or less.
Yeah.
But I mean, as far as scheduling, when you're scheduling, you're scheduling a firefighter that has EMS skills.
They all have EMS skills.
I know, but you have EMS employees fourteen and fire employees forty-two, so technically everybody that's being scheduled is a firefighter.
Yes.
So the EMS employees with a fourteen, do they not have, are, are these separate and not actually people going out in an ambulance but more clerical, or what's the fourteen?
Only one clerical.
Each one.
Yeah, um, th- those are um the paramedics versus the EMTs and AEMTs.
But the paramedics are still firefighters?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so technically you have fifty-six firefighters that also have additional skills?
Yes.
Does that include your administration as well?
Yes.
Are you included in that fifty-six?
Yes. Four of us, yes.
So when you bill us and you schedule and you know you have firefighters and, and EMTs there, I mean, they're basically crossed, are you billing us for a hundred percent of an employee's wages per day, even though you know that technically if somebody wants is, wants to be transported to Topeka and you won't have a firefighter there, you won't send a transporter, so you're keeping them based on they're a firefighter at that point?
No, we're still providing the level of care to our citizens, whether we are able to take a transfer or not, doesn't change the level of care we provide to our community.
But technically does because you haven't transferred a patient, so you're decreasing your level of care.
No, we don't have the staffing um to provide that level of care, we still have a level of care to our community, which is the first nine-one-one responsibility.
Which becomes fire because you've chosen to not take that transporter?
No. Um. They, we're, we're, yeah, even with EMS, we're, we're responsible to our citizens in our community first. Um, it doesn't matter whether it's Riley County EMS, Dickinson County EMS, um Reno County EMS, they all have the same predicaments. They have to look at what their staff and what their volume is currently and they all have to go, you know what, we can't take a transfer right now, we have to worry about our local nine-one-one service first, then worry about transfers next.
Well, so on the Riley County aspect, you can't really compare them because they are only EMS, they're not firefighters. So they are being paid strictly as an EMS employee, so the firefighter mix of it is not.
But they still turn down transfers.
But not because of the fire, not because of the firefighting.
Yeah.
Issue. It may be because they've got two EMTs available and they absolutely can't, they don't have another EMT available, but it's not because they choose to not do it to keep someone there for fire purposes. So I mean, Riley is probably not a good example when you're comparing that.
We provide two med units per city, or let's go say Gary County as a whole, two medical units, two fire trucks and a ladder truck. When that med unit goes on a transfer, that takes away from the ladder company. So we only, we have two med units, that one goes away and then now we have Robin from the ladder truck, which would reflect, you're saying, I get what you're saying, the fire guys are now on that med unit to support the med units for the hills.
It's more an issue of you don't actually probably have adequate coverage on your staff right now because you can't, you can't delineate between fire and EMT, so you can't, you're not hiring someone specifically for a twenty-four hour, hour shift to cover EMS, you're hiring someone for a twenty-four hour shift to cover both fire and EMS.
Yes, because we're the role, they have to be able to do whatever we need them to do at that critical moment.
So in that case, and we've never had the breakout problem, but we don't get that, but when you are billing us for these salaries, are you billing us as a hundred percent that it would be EMS, are you allocating that between the two duties, so we're only being billed for the EMS site? I'm guessing it's billed for both because they're performing both duties and you're not technically delineating which one they go out on.
No, you're billed for EMS.
Yeah.
Because, because we have people, we have people that their total salary, um, you know, they're, they're seventy-five percent fire salary and they're twenty-five percent EMS salary that maybe do EMS only today. And so they're available every hour, when a call comes in at two o'clock tomorrow morning and you deal what you have available and the chief deals with his people then, he has all that available billed for our communities, our, our citizens.
Right.
And he allocates the best he can, you know, his staff to, to deal these the best possible, you know, they make the transfer if they can, yeah, and, and working with some male, they're working with that and making the best possible scenarios, and I think they're doing that. Um, but you have to have people there, because I don't know what's gonna happen ten days, we have no idea.
No, I, I'm not saying that though, but you can certainly justify fifty percent fire, fifty percent EMS when someone's on staff because you, you can't track every second. So best case scenario would be you're designating fifty percent towards the county paying your sixty-six percent and fifty percent that the city is picking up for the buyer's salary, but based on what I'm looking at and the numbers that I've seen, it appears that when we're getting billed, we're getting billed for an entire pay period of the staff that is allocated both for fire and EMS with no delineation between the two.
That's always been the agreement.
That's not the agreement, it's, it's emergency medical services.
Well, they are, but, you know, you're taking a person, you're splitting the costs up between every person, you fire and EMS.
Right.
And, but you don't know on given day what they're gonna do.
No, you're not, so either you need to track it specifically to tell us, or you need to designate fifty-fifty to each and only be billing the county for fifty percent of the salary instead of a hundred percent that we're paying sixty-six percent on.
Well, then you'd be taking all those EMTs that, as firemen that, again, share it split and on certain days, you pay it off.
Well, and, and we can argue this all day, because what you believe and what I believe probably are not, and, and we're wasting time probably, but the, the point is, this is something that we probably need to look at more closely before we would say yes to any budget. And, you know, whether it's redoing this total agreement that's derived from nineteen sixty-seven, or we come to a different number in how you allocate your salaries, I, I feel like I would recommend to the commission that they look at this one closely to determine that we're not, um, you know, paying additional salaries that are not technically the requirement based on what the current agreement is.
Yeah, it's not a bad agreement. I mean, it's, nineteen sixty-seven was a good year too.
That's when people paid their bills.
Yes.
It, it served well, but it does, it, it is pretty, pretty clear that, uh, this, the scope of this agreement is an ambulance service. Um, uh, services, personnel has been required sufficiently operated in ambulance service. Um, that's why I see your point in that respect. But, uh, and also, you know, one of the things that, that is definitely out of date is that by the time you were entered into this agreement, the county was not authorized to provide an ambulance service. That's no longer the case. County can, you know, operate ambulance services. Obviously, the statutes require that it needs coordination within the ambulance district or municipality operating an ambulance within the county, and there's a method of prorating those expenses. Uh, but the county can, uh, now make direct provisions for ambulance service, med service. So, um, it sounds like the, the billing structure is a little bit out of line with the scope of this agreement. We need to get that a little clearer.
I, I think my issue, and, and put yourself as a, you know, param head, in my shoes, you guys are deciding the raises, the, what you're doing to the building, and then just expecting us to pay sixty-six percent of it, and I, I don't think that's right. Um, you know, we have no say-so in the raises you guys get or the benefits that you get, you know, you guys might be getting an eight percent raise and our employees here are only gonna get a three. And so, you know, uh, that is something I feel that we should look, re- re- look at because I, you know, I, I, I want to be able to, you know, I think you guys do a great job. I've never, I mean, I've always felt you guys are above the beyond, um, in your, so I would like to see it, you know, stay the same, but I, I don't feel that the county taxpayers are getting their money's worth.
So, when your fifty-six employees, you talk about three person entries, is next year, right?
That's, that's included.
That's included already.
So those three additional are in that.
Are in this, yes.
Which is also driving overtime back down. So cost go down too. Because one of the requests of the bargaining last year was that employees, because they felt they were doing some of the acts and being told all the time and everything else.
Because I, I'm looking at, right now, and I know we can't compare EMS, but I'm just, I guess the EMS that we're paying is two million dollars, and the total EMS budget for Riley County was just over five million. Is that what your guys' budget is? What's your budget, what's your guys' budget? The whole budget?
For?
For fire and?
What we request from you?
No, 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 just the total.
For us?
You have the total that you pay. So what, we're, okay, two million sixty is, uh, two-thirds, so is that how, how much? What, three, it would be three million?
Yeah.
And again, this is only, and, and even though they're asking for a number, we don't know, we're not asking for appropriation, we're explaining, we are.
Yeah, but I wanna get to the point where we say, this is what we have and this is what we'll give ya.
Every year is.
Because I mean, you, I mean, right now, every overtime, every, everything is sixty-six percent on us, and so, you know, I, we have no say-so over the way it, you know, it's built, and, and so I, I, I do think that we need to sit down and, and, and talk about it.
Ninety-three point four percent of all of our calls are ambulance. And eighty-five percent are, um, straight ambulance, fifteen percent, um, involve some kind of rescue, but straight out the door, ninety-three percent of all of our calls are EMS-based.
Oh, I, there's no doubt, if you look at that, then it appears that you're overpaying EMS people with a firefighter's salary.
Or I think we're.
They're not comparable with the two salaries. I mean, if you look at the basis of what, what they get, I mean, I know what the EMS bases are, and I know what the firefighters are getting, and, and they're not technically comparable when you look at their base salary for the two separate jobs.
Um, well, there, there's not two separate jobs, all.
Well, I, I'm talking about in other areas, I know they're not in Gary County, but if you took what a firefighter was paid on a base salary in a different county that has them separated and EMS, that, they are hugely different.
The, uh, only place that does a firefighter without EMS is.
Ooh.
Yeah. Does Manhattan do, what do they do?
Yeah.
The EMTs though.
Yeah.
Respond to the, and with the ambulance.
The Manhattan Fire does?
Yes, they do.
Even out in the county?
Um, not.
Depends on what the.
Like if it's a major call, then they'll go out there.
But, uh, Riley County Fire does a lot of that, or, or depending on the district.
Yeah.
But no one pays Riley County, no one pays, um, the city of Manhattan for those firefighters that might have an EMT because Riley County has their own EMS unit, and they're the only ones that get paid for ambulance services.
Well, I think for me, if you look, it's been said, you need to, you need to, this will, for the.
Yeah, another question came up. Do you mind? One, one more question before we close. Uh, you know, on your, um, budget request form, you were talking about upgrades to equipment and living quarters. Can you identify those line items that correspond with living quarters?
That was the station two's, um, remodel.
Is that, where, where is that?
The capital.
Eight thirty-five, yeah.
Okay.
Just so you know, we have to go along with that because we have the budget process, sign-up data, budget processes, and we may actually use some our potential for that. And again, we, you know, my staff does budget on a, you know, very good placeholder per se. Um, we don't try to spend it, we have other routes, we do that so the costs go down. And likewise, any costs in county go down with it.
So the only thing with that, Mr. Nikle, is when we get this in, and I know you're saying it's not an appropriation, an exact dollar amount, but we have to budget that dollar amount because we have to make sure it's available should you ask.
Just like you do for anything else.
Right, but what that means then is we're overbudding the taxpayers. If you don't actually bill us for those dollars, on the other scale, we would be tapping into our resources if we didn't have that available, so it, it is an issue for us in determining what that hard core number is that we're going to give you. So an appropriation would actually be easier for us to make sure that we're only asking the taxpayers' dollars for that exact amount rather than something that fluctuates that we're overbudding because we don't know for sure.
But do you have a department that you know exactly what you're gonna spend the next year? Um, because you don't know what.
No, we tell them what their budget's gonna be and they're gonna stay under it. That's what we do, we set their budget.
Well, we, we keep under two, and that's what we do, but if the SO had, if there was four murders in the county, or who knows what would happen, I mean, you know, as I say, that, or five, and, and overtime goes out and court costs go sky, right through the roof, and all of that stuff, you know, that's part of the budget.
Well, we just, we've had concerned citizens come in, and this has been one of their major points. The county is taxing us, the city is taxing us for the same things, dispatch is one of those, um, EMS is another one they brought up, so they feel like they're getting double taxed for the same service, which technically is true because you're setting your budget, which is likewise setting this budget, and we may not be meeting it, and so they are being double taxed.
We'd be more than happy if you apply all EMS and, and nine-one co, nine-one expenses to the county, to pass across to the county, and because everybody in the city lives in the county, that'd be fine too. I don't believe you want that though.
I don't believe that the police teams will want to give that up.
Yeah. And, but on this, I think this agreement's gonna, we're gonna be taking a look at it because just as, in, you know, in nineteen sixty-seven, they didn't know what we're dealing with today, and you know, under that, that one line item that, under eight thirty-five, I would say, uh, you know, under this agreement, this resolution number four-four-three, uh, the city said that they would, uh, uh, provide a location and shout, which helped include quarters for ambulances, and now we've got quarter remodeling going, forty-five-five of it going to the county. I, I don't know how you square that with this agreement. So, we would, we probably need to do both, look at this line item and look at this agreement and see how we.
You need to define also services because if you go strict to EMS, that means the fire truck doesn't roll out with the accident, you know, or in Milford, or wherever the case may be, and they do now, or to, or to Grand Duplaza. Because, you know, office and ambulance with a, they get it behind it, which enhances services and everything else to our people.
Very true, all the special operation stuff goes with it.
Yeah.
That is big.
Yeah, there's cooperation.
I know, but why should, why should the county resident pay sixty-six percent of that? When it's a city function?
But every city.
For rescue?
Every city, every city.
Because the, the county doesn't provide rescue.
The city has, the city, it's a city fire and EMS service, correct? If we, if we, if we pulled out of there, you would just serve the city, correct?
Unless we would get out of ambulance, those, huh, and have fire only.
I doubt that would happen. It could, it could. Um, I think there would be an uproar, but it, it could.
Everybody in the, everybody in the city.
But when we, when we partner with you, and we, and we get taxes from everybody in the, in the county, I, I don't see where they got the two-thirds.
Except seventy-one percent of your tax dollars come from within the city lives.
Exactly.
So yes, the city, I mean, yeah, it'd be, it'd be better if we just put all that cost over to, to county. It'd be totally better for everybody. But then you'd have to raise your county side, you know, you'd have to raise the taxes out of the county then. I, I, I'm not sure if that's a good move either. I think it's a good combination right now.
I think it's a good combination, I just don't think we should have to pay a third of it, or, or two-thirds of it.
Yeah, but I, I would say taxpayer pay two-thirds also, and so do you.
Yeah.
You're paying two-thirds also, and so you'd make the argument that you're paying a two-third because the city's one-third, and Keith, for example, as a county resident, is paying only one-third.
Only one-third, or two-thirds.
Two-thirds for, for the, for the same EMT services that he needs, or if he's at the hospital and he needs to transfer to PICA, he's gonna get the same idea.
Depends on if it's after ten at night. Depends on if it's after ten.
We, if it's emergency, it goes.
Emergent, yeah.
If it's emergency, it goes. I don't believe we turned any of those down.
I was joking.
Yeah. And a lot of the decisions that the chief's made on that was just keep it EMT safe and, you know, because if they crash on the way, the way wins.
I, I think we should have to, um, um, at least have a say in whether the, the size of raises that you guys get. I, I, I don't feel that we should blindly say, okay, we're gonna, you guys are gonna get a whatever percentage this year, and we have no say-so in that, if we're paying two-thirds of the salary.
And for future dreams, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure if we don't have, I don't know if we have a problem or not with that. You know, I mean, we can argue costs all day long, you know, our, our, our insurance cost to employ, we pay for employee is much less than you pay a county employee. Well, first of all, our insurance costs less at county insurance, as for a single rate, for example, but we, we.
Well, that hasn't always been.
Yeah, we allot four-twenty-five for a single employee, and you're paying more than that. And so, you know, I mean, it, you can balance all those things. And again, I think it's the services that provide, you know, that department provides services to the lake. They, they, they do patrol on, on holiday weekends out of the lake. Uh, you know, part of the dive team is fire department along with that, and last I know, we haven't had, we haven't dove much here in town. And, but it's all part of the process and the working relationship together. You know, and, uh, yeah, it's half the dive, it's half the dive team, city.
Yep, the city and, and county, yep.
Yeah.
Up now.
And yet your county had, and I, I understand that, that's a luxury now in that dive team. I mean, that, you know, Riley County got rid of their dive team because it was too expensive. And, you know, and, and our taxes are still out of control, and, um, you know, and I, I think that.
And if you drop them, we'll drop them of course too.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that that, I just feel like, you know, we, our priorities are, you know.
So with the, your rescue services of any interstate accident, there, you're calling for a county guy now that has to get out of the tractor to respond in whatever vehicle he's in. Well, for fire, we send a fire truck, four guys with that med unit that's going to that vehicle accident that's on the interstate, and so if we have our s- s- city, county, thirty-five miles of interstate. Of I seventy, so, or in highway seventy-seven, one-seventy-seven, yeah, we go, we do, we go out to those.
No, I would hate to see our, our relationship.
Your county guys.
Split, but I, you know, I just, you know, we're, I, I think, you know, having a fifty-five, fifty-six-year-old contract, that deserves to be looked at. You know, I, I, I think you guys do great job, so I, I have no problem with that.
Pretty good?
Can we get a copy of the?
Yeah, I had never seen it.
I, I see, uh.
I think I have one.
Okay.
So thanks for getting all that information together so quick, sorry for the last.
Sure.
As usual, we've had a lot of questions for you, so sorry for putting you on the line, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
You need more coffee?
How are you?
Good, what's up?
I need a copy of it.
I already, I got, uh, well, I have a, I have a couple copies. We have a couple copies, yes.
If you wanna go to the academic.
Well, there's all of them, all of them, and that's, that's the, that's a real issue. I mean, one of the issues I had, ten first guys over here, they went over and tried to negotiate a contract that everybody agreed on, I mean, percentages. So they sit up here and say that we, you know, we, we, this is a great contract for everybody, that's, it's not true. It's really not true, and you can't really sit up here and say, let's have an honest conversation and go to the table and renegotiate this. Because you know how that's gonna turn out. So, oh, that's the issue.
Well, those would be hard to input, and you're also giving your great information.
I got chest size. Yeah.
For what?
Let's get her up here and.
Yeah, I love that, Stacy.
Let's go Stacy.
Yeah, go ahead. And we're running behind, so, we're here for two forty-five and it's two forty-three, so.
Oh, cool, get it over with. I like the rest. Okay, well, you know, I'm Stacy Schrader, I'm with the Sundown salute. First of all, I want to thank you guys for your past support. Um, and moving forward, of course, it's gonna look a little different, get a little different feel, but we would still like to ask for your support for continuing forward.
So what, what is the plan for you guys today?
We're still trying to finalize details right now, um, so I can't talk quite so much, I mean, the, the, hoping Labor Day weekend, but so we're trying to finalize some stuff there, but we're, we're, we really had to move it, so.
It's gonna be three days, I guess, then, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or?
That's kind of what we're aiming for instead of, so we're not locked into the fourth per se, as it varies, we can lock this in because it's always, you know, we're gonna have a weekend, but not, not the Monday.
Yeah, okay.
Not the Monday, so.
Every, I, you guys have never, ever provided us with any budget information or any finance stuff. You're the only one on our list that has it, so is that?
I didn't, I know we were aware, I, I mean, I wasn't aware that was needed.
Well, I don't know if anybody's ever asked you. I asked last year and nobody provided any, but.
Well, they wanted, you had asked for financial. Well, they wanted, you had asked for financials.
Yeah, that's what it.
But we're, you know, we're a nonprofit, so.
I, I, the only thing I've ever asked was that it sees, uh, before there would be something, uh, numbers tallied after, right? Uh, because I understand that the event that's been put on is for citizens, and so, uh, it's the same thing I've asked at Freedom Fest.
Yeah, Freedom Fest is, um.
But I'm, I'm not sure if they give me that either, and it's.
Okay.
Because we talked about it at, at their meeting is, how many people came, like, how did it impact?
We did the, um, and I'm sorry, the CVB, the grant thing, we provided some numbers on there. Did you guys get copies of that?
No, no, that's probably someone we can reach on the.
Datafye.
On the what?
No, they have. But they provide, when they get the grant, you guys provide information.
Oh, correct, that was done after, afterwards.
Okay, so they.
Yeah. And that's, I, I'm pretty sure that was in there. So I, and I wasn't aware that you would ask about.
No, I, I've been loud about, not just y'all, just even Freedom Fest.
Who did you ask on the Sundown Salute?
So when you.
I don't. No, it was, uh. It was, uh, Big Wonder.
Okay.
DJ. I believe Nick.
No, he didn't come last year.
He not, no, no.
He came in about the, he came in and asked us for money, but not, not in budget presentation. He came last year, though.
No, I came last year.
No, no, you did for the budget, but Nick had come in the spring last.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, correct on that, so.
So it's not like, I'm, it's something I've asked of them, and it's just so we can, it'd be nice just so we can see, like, how many people attended.
Well, we also need to find people. And we're gonna give the county money. We've asked everybody else for financials, so.
Even, even all the products.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say, when you had approached me, it was like you wanted everything, but you want the budget for the actual event then, or what are you asking for?
People give us last year's budget and this year's budget.
For the event?
For the event, yes, yeah.
No, because when you had talked to me that one time, you wanted our, all of our financials.
No, somebody had asked me about audit, and I didn't even know.
And it was like, we're not giving up our, our whole packet, but, I mean, we could, we could provide, you know, what we had budgeted for last year. It was, it was over seventy-five thousand, I believe, so. So, yeah, I mean, we could do that portion, but not, not the whole financials.
Well, the financials would just be what you had for previous year. And if you're a nonprofit, you would have filed a nine-ninety, and that nine-ninety requires you to have all of that financial, so.
And I can get with our account.
And that's actually a public record, so we can go in, and that should be able to be pulled off the internet.
Okay.
So if you have that and you're up to date, the record should already be out there for you.
Okay.
Pretty easy.
Okay. I, I, I'm sorry, I just wasn't aware of it.
I know, it's happened. We have, I talked to him now, so, you know, things.
Was not aware, so.
Are you sort, uh, are you guys doing fireworks again with this, with these ones, or are you using these ones or something? Oh, no, it's right here. No, that was.
I know in the past, when we had it here in town, you, you wanted that earmarked towards the fireworks. Now, of course, you know, we're a different grouping, so.
Okay.
Seeing how it goes.
And, uh, when you guys do get with Donna, she be able to provide, I think they're using Datafye now?
Yep.
So it's, it's some fancy tech. So they'd be able to basically see who came in, uh, from where, and all types of things. This.
How would, how would that be recorded? Like, because I keep thinking last year.
They can explain it a lot better than me.
On your, oh, okay. I'm, I'm thinking last year, if you went the night Diamond Rio is there.
Yeah, I, I'm, I was out of town.
That was crazy, so.
That was weird.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking how, I mean, there was no way we could keep up with, you know, finding out where everybody was from.
Or like a, what do you call that?
It'd be taken.
The GPS following you everywhere, that the government's watching, so.
Great. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna check up there about the agency request. Um, right underneath the amount of requests, it says, brief description of request for funding approved last completed year comprehensive financials and current account budgets.
Okay.
You may have just overlooked that, but that's.
Okay.
Well, I think that's.
Well, and number one, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't.
Because it said Tricia was gonna be the one that come and do.
True, and last minute change, so, yeah.
No.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, I'm gonna show you, show you something.
Uh-oh, this could be dangerous, so. Okay, thank you, guys.
Just picking an idea while we're talking. So, this is Freedom Fest.
Okay.
I had, leaving that free, so maybe you gotta.
I need to rush.
Yeah, I have to leave it. I got that.
Okay. Okay. And I just wasn't aware of it.
You have one, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I gotta hurry. Okay.
Unless you save some of this for Monday.
I'm just gonna go over it quick, and then if you have questions, you can ask me additional questions on Monday. Will that work?
Yeah, alright.
See if I can keep some tripping. I know, right? Alright. So I'm just gonna go through these budgets, budgets relatively quickly. Um, I gave you a memo that kind of outlines what we're looking at. So the first one I have here is finance. And the adjustments that you see on the bottom line, line from the two forty-eight to the three twenty-four are, of course, adding that APN Finance Analyst position, and then also the costs, um, for postage and for the printing and duplication services. Um, we are getting a different copier, and so we'll have those printing costs, and we expect that they'll increase based on the number of papers that will be printed with AP Thatchers along. In addition, we have the software maintenance support, which went from that five hundred in the twenty-three budget to two thousand. That's, again, going to be, um, the new copier. And then, uh, just so you're aware, when we use Neztec for anything besides what our normal contract says, so if, for instance, if they, when they came in and moved Jamie and Tiffany, we had to pay them a thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, when they came in and moved us, when we did the carpet thing, we had to pay them, I think it was almost eight thousand dollars total for all of those moves. So that's something that I budgeted in here, um, as if there's anything that happens where we have to deal with them, I put just a little bit of extra in there. Um, in the advertising and legal publications, that'll be for budget and audit costs. And we have, uh, office supplies, which we've also increased for paper and check stock, and then toner cartridge, because we use a special mixer for those. And right now, we're using what is already on, uh, in the clerk's office. We're gonna go ahead and, and get that used out before we make any adjustments, but we expect in twenty-four that we'll have to get new toners for that. Um, so those are my main changes on finance. Any questions? Okay. On the commissioners, this was largely due to the discussions we had back and forth on things that you identified that I needed to adjust. So there's an overall nine thousand dollar difference. Um, you can see that four thousand of that is in your wages with that four percent proposed increase. Any questions on there or anything that we should look at adjusting? What did you tell her that you wanted in your budget?
That was the, no, that was for the possible trip.
Oh, yeah, to.
Oh, the extra one.
The extra one.
Did you put that in there? So I have five thousand in training and registration, and a thousand in airfare, a thousand in lodging. And in twenty-twenty-two, we only had two hundred seventeen and seven eighty-six in lodging and airfare, so.
Okay.
I thought that we should have enough in there, but if there's additional, we can certainly add that.
Okay.
Well. Are you going to AUSA?
So I, I was prepared in this year.
Well, last year, um, you didn't go to KAC, and you didn't go to KC, neither one of you went to this.
Yeah, I hated going to.
I didn't notice, they said.
Or, um.
Or USM. No, I think that should.
We're sufficient.
If we had some carryover, I would then go over there.
Yeah, but I would go back into the general.
It goes into the general, so you don't see any carryover.
So, no, I think that should be sufficient.
Okay. And then, of course, you know, we can talk about the salaries and all of that at a later point, because I know that's something that, uh, you want.
Well, we all, or we go to, if I go to AUSA, and then we all go there for the, um, first division thing, that's gonna be more than a thousand dollars.
For what?
For the airfare.
But that, I mean.
Maybe we might.
She's still bumped up the training and registrations, so.
We can put three thousand in airfare, that's.
Okay.
Just know that that will be making a couple of adjustments. So is that, does that seem adequate then?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, a thousand each would, would probably be.
Yeah, that's true.
Potentially, depending on what kind of a deal you get.
Yeah. So how come there was no airfare in last year's?
In last year's budget? I don't know why you guys didn't budget that. I mean, you didn't a, adjust or ask for any changes. So, and the thing about this is when we built the twenty-three budget, when you're looking at twenty-one as your actual, um, we didn't have a very good delineation on what the expenses were, so we just have other contractual services. And so in twenty-two, um, what you're seeing is me having made as close of a breakout as I could based on the expenses that exist and where I thought they should go, because we still didn't have all of our coding changed in twenty-two. And so. Probably just listed under contractual. Right. So when you're looking at that, it's more about where it was classified previously than anything, because you could have had, um, airfare in twenty-one, and maybe I didn't know because it was a reimbursement to you or a reimbursement, because you probably didn't use a credit card.
We didn't have AUSA. I'm talking more about that, but.
Right. So it's, it's about when I give it to you and you look at it, if, like this discussion, you have to identify if there's something that we need to adjust, um, that you feel like might be missing. Uh, so when you're looking at that, and we try to put a little bit into either capital outlay or other supplies and materials or other contractual services, those are the things that are unknown, that we're trying to make sure we capture because we maybe weren't aware that we would need it. So, um, for instance, like the, the Neztec thing, we didn't know we were gonna need to pay them to move us. We did, and so that's the line item where that went for those services, in my case, on the finance budget. So, does that make sense? But yeah, do review, and if you think there's anything else in your budget, let me know, and I would certainly make that adjustment. Uh, the next one is general services. The employee separation is based off discussion with HR, um, as well as our health insurance that we provide for people who've retired. So, um, this is based off the new policy, knowing that there's six people remaining on the old policy who will go from fifty percent to thirty percent from, that the county pays. So that's what these adjustments are on the employee separation and benefits. Um, nothing really huge has changed in here. Just want to highlight your lease payments to the PBC for the jail and hospital, which you're aware of those, we have those. Um, and then, of course, we increased our cost to Neztec on our contract. That's approximately two thousand dollars a month increase. And then our annual cost to CIC is fifty-three thousand, three oh five. Um, and then the other thing, just to note, is we have three hundred and seventy-four thousand in indigent, and that's what we have as an estimate. Betsy is still working with a couple of the attorneys to make sure that this is an adequate base. So if anything comes up, I'll keep you aware of any changes. Um, did increase the corner autopsies just a little bit, because after last year, I was made aware that we have adjustments each year, and there's no set amount, so it's based on whatever we get is what we pay. And so I did put a little bit of an increase in there to try to make sure we can capture that. Um, appropriations, you can see we went from a three-point-three million dollar budget to a three-point-eight million dollar budget, and that is all based on what they've requested. That is not based on what's been approved or what will be approved. So that number can be adjusted potentially. The thirty-nine-hundred appropriation line item down there, right before total contractual service. And you have your list by agency of what they've requested to review. And so these are the ones that are only in general. So there's a couple down at the bottom of that list you have that is under special alcohol for like Circle A, and then, of course, the EDC, which goes through economic development and then the library. So make sure when you're looking at those numbers at the bottom for the total, the reason that three-point-eight million doesn't match is because there's more than just the general fund on there. And then these are the proposed transfers, which you can review, and we can have any further discussion on Monday on any of that, unless you have something specific today. Debt service is very cut and dry, because that's based on the sales tax we get in estimated. And then, of course, um, we have one more payment for the no-fund warrant since twenty-twenty-four. And based on what we have in reserve for the no-fund warrants, we owe seven-two thousand, nine fifty-eight to be able to pay that warrant and be done with it. And then we will only have that two thousand sixteen one going through this fund. Any questions on that one? The next one is your facilities fund. And on twenty-twenty-three, I'm giving you an estimate on what I'm expected, what I'm expecting five hundred thousand may be a little bit high, but we are over two hundred thousand now. And so, um, what we go into twenty-twenty-four, we might have a little bit more than what I have as an estimate, but at this point, this is what we have in our budget. If we have more and if we spend more, we can amend the budget if we would have to do that. But as you note on these, we are doing a balanced budget, and this is very important for taxpayers who don't understand this or are not clear on why we are ending with a zero balance and not a cash carryforward. Because in a balanced budget, your revenues equal your expenditures. And by statute, you have to have a balanced budget in anything that you levy, which is your general fund and your debt service fund. So no matter what, those two have to be a balanced budget. You can't have more revenue or more expense. And then likewise with that, by having a balanced budget, that gives you the maximum capacity to use those funds should it become necessary. So it gives you the authority, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's your intent to spend all those dollars. Are there any questions on that?
No, that's a conversation you and I.
Yep. And I know there's a couple of taxpayers who've asked some questions on that, and I think they're just not understanding that the authority is there, but the intent is not necessarily. Economic development, this is one I want to look at more closely, because we have several, um, entities, Flint Hills MPO, Flint Hills Regional Council, Flint Hills Leadership, Freedom Fest, Sundown Salute, Juneteenth, Main Street, the MAC, Opera House, YMCA, that I think fit all into the economic development. So what you can do, if you so desire, is to determine a set dollar amount that you want to put into economic development towards these programs, or at the very least, I would like to put them into this fund as economic development, so that when we transfer funds from the general that we levy for these purposes into this fund, anybody who asks you questions on what you're doing for economic development, you would have this fund, and you would have this list to say, these are the dollars we're putting into the community. So that's something that I would like us to look at. And if we do, then this budget would be adjusted with a bigger transfer coming in here, and then all of those entities being listed as where the appropriations will be paid.
So is that separate apart from EDC and MAC?
So EDC and MAC, I sent you all that information, and that's also something that we have, need to have a bit more discussion on, because from what I can read on the agreements, and I did ask Betsy to confer. Because from what I can read on the agreements, and I did ask Betsy to confer, is if we have. Those two as one unit, it shows that we should be paying a half a mil towards that. However, later in that agreement, it does give you the latitude to give them more money, should you have more money to give. So that's all based on what you guys determine, but that's, I also want, uh, Betsy's input to make sure she agrees with what I've read. And I've provided you all those documents, which, you know, you guys can read and see if you come to that some same conclusion. But like I said, this economic development fund, I think we could build it better to show what you're spending on economic developments. You can show your constituents clearly delineated in the budget book, if we have this listing down below, this information. So they can see where those dollars are spent, how much are being spent year to year on them. Uh, the next one is the opioid settlement. This has got to be done based on the state. The state has required that we do a budget for the opioid settlement. So I've done that, uh, cursory towards what they've required us to do. And then, um, these last two, these are estimates and this is more as a transparency piece than anything. Because you are not required to budget capital, um, improvement funds. However, I think in good faith to the people to see what we're doing for them. As far as safety measures and just, um, taking care of the county, this is good information for them to have, which shows what we spent in twenty twenty-two. What we're estimating that we might spend in twenty twenty-three and what we would estimate to spend in twenty twenty-four. And then on top of that, I have provided you cash flow statements and we'll continue to do that once we get all the kinks worked out in CIC. So that, that, uh, report will also allow you to provide information and it will give it to you based on the actual projects having been approved. And how many dollars were spent by month. So that will be a tool that you can also use out there for your constituents with any questions on what are we doing in the county with that capital improvement program. And likewise with special bridge, it's, it would be considered a capital, um, program. And so it's not required, legally required by statute to be budgeted, but again, as a transparency piece, to let people know what we're doing in the public. And then I know that Public Works creates a spreadsheet of what they're spending on different projects and we could have that provided to you as well. And in fact, you may get it when Cory does his, um, updates for you. So that you know where those dollars are going, the county on the, the bridge projects.
So the, the decrease in the, in the special bridge is because some of that's being moved in the CIP?
No, not on special bridge. The reason, um, we're going from nine hundred thousand to five hundred thousand in twenty-four is because, if you recall, we have those dollars being spent. In twenty-three with the current project.
Oh, okay.
And so we know a lot of those dollars are going out right now.
Yes.
Um, and so the reimbursement of four hundred thousand, that's those change orders we talked about last week with Cory that I, we should get reimbursed for. But we still know we'll have like around nine hundred thousand going out on those projects. So, and, and we may get some more rate reimbursements, but that's my, my best estimate at this point in time.
Yeah.
Any other question?
No. Thank you.
That's all I have, uh, please review it carefully and let me know if you have any questions or concerns or if there's anything else you would like me to bring information on.
Alright.
And then we do have valuation.